The views, information, and opinions expressed during the following program are solely those of the individuals involved and do not necessarily represent the views of Access Communications, its representatives, or its employees.
Okay, good evening, everyone, and welcome to the regular council meeting of February 26th. We'll call the meeting to order. We have nothing this evening under presentations. Could I have a motion, please, from council to adopt the agenda as presented? Thank you. Look at that. Keener is right off the get-go. Counselor Frank and Counselor Cernick, you guys are going to have to be watching tonight, I can tell. Ready for the question, all in favor? Carried. Thank you. Next, could we have a motion, please, to adopt the minutes of the council meeting held on February 12th? Thank you. Counselor Clark, seconded by Counselor Wollizer. Ready for the question, all in favor? Carried. Thank you. Next, under original communications, delegations, and petitions, we have Jennifer Kohinka here. Welcome, Jennifer, for the brain injury walk support. I wish to propose a motion to have a walk to represent the Saskatchewan Brain Injury Association in our city. I was hoping that I could have this walk on the weekend of Saturday, July 13th, 2024. I wish to have this walk at Fresh Air Fitness in Estevan. I will represent for the Saskatchewan Brain Injury Association and walk with everyone that can attend. I hope I can get your support. I wish to present on Monday, February 26th. Please give me your support. Anything you wanted to add, Jennifer? No? Okay. No, I think that says it all. So what's the wish of council? Counselor Varova?
Thank you, your worship. Thank you, Jennifer, for coming today and asking to have this walk or to having the support for this walk. I'm assuming, too, that Fresh Air Fitness will get behind you and support that you use their facility. It is a public facility, but I definitely think that the city of Estevan should support this. And you're not asking for any kind of financial support or anything, you're just asking for endorsement that we support that you have that walk on the 13th?
Yes, Mrs. Shelley Varova, I'm just asking for people to join me and participate in a walk, and I will have T-shirts as well at this event. And so I know that there are many brain injury survivors like myself in this province, and we are trying to move forward with Bill C. 277, but I think that might be, that's a national, so it might be on a separate issue.
Yeah. No, I'd like to make that motion and that city support the walk.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Varova. Counselor Wollizer?
Thank you, your worship. I will second the motion. Just a question, how can people who are interested get ahold of you?
People who are interested, Mrs. Wollizer, can contact me at 306-471-7471. So I've been collecting pledges, and, Mrs. Wollizer, I collect pledges every year. I understand that the Saskatchewan Brain Injury Association unfortunately is in a deficit of money, so you can contact me that way. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Wollizer. Counselor Frank?
Thanks, your worship, and thanks again for coming and definitely want to support this, and I hope to be out walking with you, and I'll make sure, encourage as many as I can, on top of being friends with you, but I have another dear friend who no longer lives in Estevan anymore, but I worked with for many years, who's had a brain injury, and I know the many complications that come with that, and so we definitely want to support your cause. And yeah, I look forward to being out there walking with you and raising as much money as we can for you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Frank. Any other questions, comments? Seeing none, ready for the question, all in favor? There you go, Jennifer, and thank you so much for coming tonight. Next, under original communications, delegations, and petitions, we have from the Estevan Bruins Hockey Club requesting relief. Now, what could this possibly be? So we have the ex-pres to throw his weight around here tonight, Mr. Biggs, and Robert, and Melissa. So who wants to talk? Robert?
Full team affair. Yeah, thank you so much for having us here tonight. We're here because our sportsman's dinner is coming up on April 13th. We're really excited this year to be able to host it in Affinity Place. It's the first time this has happened in a number of years. We've had a number of people ask us in previous years if it's something that we can do, so we're finally going to make it happen, and we're looking forward to it. We've got two great speakers, Mike Commodore and Jeremy Ronek, our guest speakers this year. We're going to have a great meal and some auction items as well. We wanted to come to council tonight and ask if we would be able to get support for rental relief for our event. So essentially, what we're looking for is forgiveness on some of the rental items that we'll be using, like the pipe and drape and the facility and some of those tangible items. And then we would cover the physical costs or the actual cost of having the staff transform the venue, put in the flooring, and things like that. So what we're looking at is a total amount of $2,400. It is, I can get the full amount for you, not even prepared with it in front of me. So the total amount would be $2,440, and again, that would cover the cost of the rental items that we would use, including the facility rental as well.
And that's 2,400 off of the total cost of, what, Robert, 7,500 approximately?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you, gentlemen. Now, I have a question. I know, like with affinity, with the Festival of Trees, which they fill that place, you know, we have that in there. Could we not have this at the curling rink, or do we think that we're going to fill Affinity?
This year, our plan is to fill Affinity, so we're hoping to have up to 75 tables sold for this event this year.
Wow.
We have had feedback in the past, too, from people who said that they won't attend the event at the curling rink. I think it was people who helped fundraise for Affinity, and their feeling was that we should be using that facility more. So we went with some of that feedback and wanted to host the event. They're also bringing in a bigger name speaker. We are hoping to sell more tables than we could comfortably accommodate at the curling rink.
Okay, good.
And just as one more point, we did, we do have board members from, that, who have interest with Estevan Minor Hockey as well as the Figure Skating Club, so it was a consideration just because we will be tying up the ice for a couple of days, and the city has, the last couple of years, has put the ice in. So, but it's our hope that this won't reduce the amount of rentals. It might just displace them by a day or two. So we're hopeful that anybody who may have used the ice during those two days, it will be, two or three days, it will have the ice out or have the floor in, will be able to book on either side of that to still keep utilization high on that.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we'll open the floor to members of council for any questions, comments. Counselor Clark?
Thank you, your worship. I'm going to support this. I think it's a reasonable request for a big event that you guys are going to put a lot of effort into. I know it's maybe even been a tough year for the Bruins, so I think it's important that we get behind this and do that, so I'll make the motion for the $2,440. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Clark, any other questions, comments? Counselor Cernick?
I'll just second the motion.
Okay. Any other comments, observations? Counselor Wollizer?
Thank you, your worship. One thing that I would like to suggest is that because it does take a lot of staff time to set up and take down, we've been asking that when this request comes in, people have some volunteers there as well. So if our staff are getting the chairs onto the floor, you have some people that can quickly lay them out, just kind of to build the team. So just something to keep in mind and work with Aaron closer to the date.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Wollizer, any other questions, comments? Seeing none, ready for the question, all in favor? Carried. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks, guys. Gentlemen and lady, you're more than welcome to stay for the council meeting. I know how exciting you guys were to...
Looks like a busy agenda tonight, but unfortunately, I like double look.
Okay, well, thanks, Robert. That sounded really good.
It's believable.
Okay, thanks, guys. Okay, next, under original communications, delegations, and petitions, we have a request from the stripper tournament, April 3rd to 7th, requesting events permit, and again, requesting rental relief. What's the wish of council on this? I'll maybe read this out. What's that?
I guess I better read.
Oh, okay.
I have to say it again. I'm a stripper.
Okay. Okay, let it be noted, Counselor Cernick is leaving the council chambers since he is a stripper. I don't think he's tripped lately, but anyway, Mayor and Council, the Estevan Strippers Hockey Club, will be hosting their 40th annual hockey tournament, April 3rd to 7th, 2024, with a full complement of 40 teams, which speaks to the popularity of the tournament. Having 40 teams in the tournament means we have a total of 60 games, so we need three rinks to complete the schedule. We moved several games to Beanfate, who thankfully hold their ice for us despite not much activity at the rink that late in the year. Holding a tournament of this size definitely benefits many of the businesses in Estevan. Last year, 14 of the 36 teams booked two nights accommodation in the local motels, while several others in the area stayed Saturday night following the cabaret. This also means extra revenue for other businesses in the city. The strippers continue to make numerous donations in the area, including $2,000 annually to sponsor the Parent Todd Skate Program. Our other donations are shown in the attached document. This brings our total donations to over $230,000 since 1997. We also have ownership of a cooler trailer, which we give out to nonprofit organizations, most recently the Festival of Trees, at no charge. We use the Power Dodge Curling Center for our beer gardens and cabarets, and we provide free rides home Thursday to Saturday with the help of Baker Hughes Oil Company. We also hire professional security, which costs us close to $5,000 for the two cabarets, which this year will feature live bands at both events. Last year, our rental for ice at Affinity Place and the Power Dodge Arena was close to $11,500, while the Beanfate ice cost us close to $4,000. This year, we anticipate the total cost to be over $17,000, as we are expecting 40 teams for our 40th anniversary tournament. We are sending this letter once again to request the city to waive the rental fee for the Power Dodge Curling Center. Since there would be no other use of this facility during this time period, we feel the cost to the city would be very minimal. We thank you again for consideration of our requests. Estevan Stripper Hockey Club. Counselor Frank?
Thanks, your worship. Just to clarify, so they're just looking for the rental fee on the, so kind of similar to what the Bruins just asked for. They want just the rental fee, but they are paying for any staff hours or anything like that?
At the curling rink, correct, Aaron? Did you want to step up? Would you mind answering that, please, so we get the right information right off the get-go?
Or do we give the whole thing for free on this one?
Hi. Sorry. Yeah, so what they're requesting is discount, actually waiving the fees for the curling rink. They do all the work. They, we just drop off tables and chairs, and they have a work bee, and they set everything up. They sweep their floor after every evening. We change some toilet paper rolls and try and keep them happy that way, but they're pretty self-sufficient.
Well, and that's not surprising. This team and this tournament does so much good for the community. It's astounding, so I have no problem supporting it. I just wanted to make sure I knew what exactly we were confirming, so I would make the motion, too. I think the first motion on the books that we need is actually for the permit, correct?
Yeah, did you want that for both?
They have to be separate.
They have to be separate. So I guess I'll make the motion for the permit, since that's first up, so that that's off, and then we can go to the next one.
Thank you. Counselor Frank. Counselor Varova?
Thank you, worship. Thank you, Aaron. Yeah, no, I'll second the motion for the permit, but I also, after this, will also support the motion to do the rental relief, partly also because the Stripper Hockey Club is a bunch of very big-hearted men who, and a lot of wives, who in the background are helping out at all times. And they help out so many other organizations in this community, they have their trailer, that they also give to other organizations to use for their nonprofit events. And they're always giving back, and they're definitely making donations. And so, yeah, it's great that they continue this on, and I think it's wonderful that we're still actually making ice rental off of them for the whole entire tournament. The hotels, the restaurants, the shopping, there's going to be some economical benefit for sure every year when they have their tournament, so I will second that permit motion.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Varova. And for clarification, I know the comment was made, but there is no stripping. These men play hockey. Just so there's no confusion.
They 100% play hockey, and they also give back to their community.
Absolutely. Okay, thank you. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, ready for the question, all in favor? Carried. Next, the other request is requesting the rental relief, as Aaron explained. Do we have a motion on that? Counselor Clark?
Thanks, your worship. I'll make that.
Okay, thank you. Have we got a seconder? Okay, thank you. Counselor Frank, any further questions or comments? Seeing none, all in favor? Carried. Thank you so much. Yeah, please, Trudy, would you mind letting Counselor Cernick back in? Let it be noted, Counselor Cernick has entered the council chambers with full dress. Okay. Next, under written reports of committees, we have the Creighton Lodge minutes of January 11th. Do we have a motion to accept? Thank you, Counselor Wollizer. Seconder. Thank you, Counselor Varova. Any questions or comments on that? Seeing none, ready for the question, all in favor? Carried. Thank you. Next, under written reports of committees, we have Southeast Transportation Planning Committee, the minutes of January 23rd. Do we have a motion for that? Thank you, Counselor Clark. Seconded by, thank you, Counselor Wollizer. Anything you'd like to say, Counselor Clark?
Yes, thanks, worship. Just want to, within that package, there's also a bulletin that they've sent out to all of the members, with some good information on what we do and to do with snow removal, different things. There's going to be, I think, every six months, we'll do a separate one on some issue for the Highway Committee. And I'm just wondering, is there someplace that we could post that, that people could access that as well, so that it just doesn't go to the seven of us here, and it sort of needs to be shared, that we could put it onto one of our sites? Thank you.
Yeah, sure. I'm sure through the offices of city manager, we can get that posted on the city site, if you like. Counselor Varova?
Thank you, worship. Something else that just got shared, and I think the provincial government's trying to get it out there, too, is the, on the Highway app, you can actually follow the snowplow. So I know a lot of times people are looking on social media, trying to see if the highways are safe. You can go on the Saskatchewan Highways app and actually see where the snowplow has been, and if the highway is safe to go on. So just wanted to put that out there.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Varova. Okay, ready for the question? All in favor? Carried. Thank you. Next, under written reports of committees, we have from the Estevan Art Gallery, the museum minutes of December 13th and January 23rd. Do we have a motion for that? Thank you, Counselor Cernick. Have we got a seconder? Thank you, Counselor Wollizer. Ready for any comments, questions, observations? Counselor Varova?
The art gallery is also hosting their first gin night on March 23rd, and it's called the Gin Joint. It's going to be the prohibition kind of era, and it will be the last birds entertaining. So if anyone would like to purchase a ticket, they can go right to the art gallery, or they can come to myself for $40. So it should be a good night.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you. Okay, any other further questions, comments? Seeing none, all in favor? Carried. Okay, next, under executive reports, we have from the Tax Assessor, the list of land and arrears. Could we have a motion, please, to accept that? Counselor Cernick, thank you. Seconder? Counselor Frank, thank you. Okay, any questions, comments, observations? Seeing none, ready for the question? Oh, Counselor Frank?
I was just going to ask just the kind of typical question we usually ask, but I don't think Trudy is here, is if we're any further kind of behind or ahead than we normally are? Is this list a little, just because it's one that's usually asked?
Thank you, Counselor Frank, to your worship. In 2023, it was 326,000, but you'll notice there is one that's all properties related to one kind of area in this year. That's over 200,000 that I don't think they were all in there last year. So I can do a further breakdown like council.
Okay, any other further questions, comments? Seeing none, ready for the question? All in favor? Thank you. Okay, next, under executive reports, we have from Public Works, snow dumping report, and Seventh Street. So thank you, Haley, for stepping up to the mic. Okay, there was an inquiry from council that due to the condition of Seventh Street, should we look at discontinuing utilizing this location as a snow removal dump site. Roads and drainage utilize a total of nine strategically placed dump sites to provide the fastest and shortest route from the snow blower at any given location within the city. In the event of a large snowfall, when equipment is dispatched to various locations around the city, the process in place is to utilize the closest dump site. Currently, when both snow blowers are operational, the operators are waiting for empty trucks to return, and on average, the snow removal process takes five days to complete. Excuse me. Recently, access to the Seventh Street dump site has been changed by way of 14th Ave. and Seventh Street. Instead of traveling to the end of Seventh Street West, during normal winter temperatures, there is no concern over deterioration of the road as things are frozen. If the decision is not to use Seventh Street Dump Site overall, it would double the time to complete a large snowfall event. Due to increased time, this may cause complaints. So the option solutions continue utilizing Seventh Street Dump Site, as it is the most cost-effective to complete snow removal in a timely manner, and using Coronation Valley Street, Pasture, Drater Street North, or Esso Sister Ruddy Road Dump Sites as an alternative to Seventh with longer travel times. Recommendations, roads and drainage recommend, the recommendation would be to continue using Seventh Street Dump Site, especially if we were to get a very large snow event. This would be the most efficient operationally. Okay, Haley, did you have anything to add? Okay, Counselor Varova?
Thank you, worship. I did send photos to all of council, and my apologies, Haley. I think I did not send those emails to you. I don't know if Jeff had forwarded them to you or not.
I have shown them.
Okay, so part of the concern on here is not just the roads, it's also one family who has come forward. In 1999 is when this land was stopped being used as a dump site, and so, of course, that was before your time being employed at the city. But the reason it was stopped is because the residents that lived down there came forward, and Mercury had done an article about this, and I have that copy of the article, if David would like to ever pull it out. But basically, council of the day stopped using Seventh Street, and the reason is it was detrimental to the people that were living there because of the small cul-de-sac. And the trucks, as far as I know, have only recently started using 14th Avenue. So I took a drive down there, and that little cul-de-sac, I can only imagine if those big trucks were coming right up to that gentleman's house. He actually purchased the land beside his house, and he owns that where he has a garage. Some of those pictures show just how close these dump trucks come to the side of his garage, and they're building big snow hills there. Also, sometimes, and again, he had pictures where the snow was being dumped right on the street. We have pictures of operators who seem to be having a bathroom break beside the truck, and when they're on that site, it goes right up to the window, where he looks outside of his window. And I went to his house, I sat right in his house, and it looks, it's so close. It's 94 feet from his kitchen or living room window. So he sits in his chair, and that's all he sees and hears all day long. He said some dump truck operators are banging their end gate once, some is five times again. That could be completely operational. And so he has, since 2006, 2007, when the city started using that site again, he has basically been, he feels, tormented by this dump site. So I know we had got it brought forward last year, and last year, it was kind of just summarized. It wasn't really gone into great lengths. It was just, there was one concern on Seventh Street. I did apologize to him when I went this time, because it's the first time he's contacted me, for not having gone before, but we also didn't know who it was. Having gone this time, I feel very strongly that the city needs to move this dump site, and I think one area that could be utilized that was not mentioned is King Street. So King Street can be dumped right into the valley, whereas Seventh Street, they also don't just dump the snow there. Then they have to go back and spend two days moving all the snow into the valley. So it's extra time that they're there. I know in the report, it says that it would cause twice the amount of time. However, Seventh Street was also told to us that it was only used for a small portion of the snow removal. So I respectfully disagree that it would take twice as long to do the snow removal. And so I am asking today that we add another option to that, and I would like to make a motion that the city use King Street as a dump site, or find another option, but stop using Seventh Street.
Okay, Counselor Varova, now, even though we've changed, and now the trucks go by 14th Ave. and Seventh Street, you still don't think that makes a difference?
It's still 94 feet to his front window, and honestly, your worship, when I went there, I can feel why he would feel that way. It's a very small cul-de-sac. He's purchased that land right beside his house. He has a very well-maintained home, and that, he said, when he's sitting there, things are shaking right off the shelf on his television, he said, has actually been having to be replaced, because he feels it's just a shaking vibration of the, what the whole trucks are doing to his home. He's very fearful that his home itself is being damaged due to the vibration and shaking. I think he has a valid complaint, and I feel like in 1999, council saw that he had a valid complaint, and for some reason, 2006, 2007, it started up again. And he has complained in the past, but he feels he's gone unheard. And so, again, I don't know if anyone, he's actually phoned, but this time, he actually, it was a friend of his that reached out to me, concerned about his actual physical health, and he's given me paperwork based on the noise bylaw in Estevan. And we have nine other dump sites that we have never had another concern about. So I just feel like we're doing a disservice to people on Seventh Street, especially this family, and the family that resides beside him by continuing to use Seventh Street.
Okay, and I have been there. I have talked to this gentleman on quite a few different occasions. Counselor Clark?
Thanks, your worship. Thanks for the report, Haley. I just, the snow collection that we dumped there, is it strictly from Seventh, Eighth, and Ninth Street on that, on the west side of Service Avenue, or is it the whole area that gets dumped there?
Your worship to Counselor Clark. So we do Seventh, Eighth, and Ninth, and then some of our downtown core. And as well, on top of that, we haul Power Dodge and Affinity and Curling Rink and Fire Hall parking lots to that dump site as well.
Go ahead. Yeah, just to further follow up, I certainly understand the stuff from that area getting dumped there, and I don't think it would be a big challenge to take the stuff from Power Dodge and those parking lots to the King Street Dump Site, but I think there's some sort of a need for the people in the area to understand that that's, you're right there, and that to drive that completely around to a different site wouldn't be, I don't think would be necessary. So I would like to see maybe a reduction in the use, but I think it should still be used for that area.
Okay, thank you for that. Any other questions or comments? Counselor Cernick?
Yeah, I'll second the motion to discontinue using it, just... Sorry, just because of, obviously, the past, you know what I mean? The past council, that was very good information. That kind of changed my mind, really. Just to quit using it, it's obviously causing grief, and it's just one person sticking up or whatever. So then again, just the information we presented with of the past, and kind of how that came, if a council in the past got rid of it, how does it come about again? Like, was it another motion from council to bring it in, which, you know what I mean? So I would second the motion to discontinue using Seventh Street.
Okay. Now, when, the way the new route is, Haley, 14th and Seventh, we are further from this house in question, are we not?
Your worship, where we enter, we are further away, but we have to go all the way down to the west to dump into the valley.
Okay.
So we're still down there. So, we're still down there, but...
Around 100 feet from the house. Okay, well, maybe we could do a combination, Counselor Vroba. I know we don't go there early in the morning now, do we, Haley, we don't go there until what, what's our timeframe?
Your worship, we usually go there after nine o'clock.
After nine?
I just wanted to add one more thing. If we do use the King Street one, we're still going to have to get cat operators, because we can dump into the valley for so long, but then you're going to have to push as well, like we do on Seventh Street.
Okay. And yeah, I know we used to use King Street, I'm not sure why, again, that was discontinued. Maybe we could use a combination, and by doing that, use both less. Counselor Vroba.
Yeah, right now, I have a motion on the floor, but if King Street is a viable option, because I don't know why it was stopped being used, then I still do stand that King Street is not that far from Seventh Street, and it is a good option to use. And, I think even if we try it, and again, like the motion said, to stop using Seventh Street, to give this man a reprieve, and then, in a year or two from now, come back with a report to council how King Street's working out, or the costs that's incurred, and then we can look at it that way. But, right now, we haven't actually received any costs as to what it actually would cost, and it's not that far from Seventh Street over to King Street.
Well, I guess, to be fair to the people on King, we should probably notify them, let them know of our plans, and get feedback from them as well, and, you know, maybe they won't mind, but I'm sure wherever we have the dumps, you'll find some people that are crazy about it.
Well, and we could, but we currently have nine dump sites, and this is the only one in the seven years that I've been on council that we've had a concern about.
Okay, any, Counselor Frank?
Yeah, and I'm torn on this one, because I get it, I get that we have to dump the snow somewhere, and unfortunately, that means somebody's going to have to live near one, that's just the life, but I also recognize Counselor Vroba has seen a lot of these concerns, and I know that area does get compacted, so I kind of want to at least take the opportunity, this year being a low snow year, to try and figure out if there are other areas, but I do recognize, exactly what you said, your worship, that that means we'll probably need to notify those areas that we're going to be in there and figure out what we can do. I'm not an expert on snow removal, that's what Haley is for, so I kind of want to rely on her, but I get that this is, this is obviously a pretty severe area, and I know it is also a tight area, and there is a lot more residential there than there might be in other areas. King Street, are you referring to by the water pump building there?
By the lift station, that's correct, by that fourplex?
Yeah.
We used to dump there, now, we do own enough land. Now, having said that, the land that we own is used in the springtime, summer, fall for a garden, but in the winter, we own enough land that we could go in there with the trucks, and then back up to the edge of the valley and dump.
To me, I like that area more as a dump site, but I know that that does back into some people's properties too, so we'd want to, but it also, where, hearing Counselor Vroba is concerned, it won't cause snow to get that close to a property, at least would be a benefit, so, I'd certainly suit trying, I don't know if I want to say absolutely no forever, but I definitely would like to see us try some different ideas and see what would work, and have a better look at it, and at least try to accommodate as best we can. But, I also recognize, in a heavy snowfall year, you know, when we're trying to get rid of as much snow as possible, we might just have to use every opportunity, or every space we can, and that's, that's not what we're seeing this year, but that's a problem for another day, I guess, so, I guess, yeah. So, I'm okay with trying something else at this point, and then getting some report back in some time and find out what...
Okay, so, we'll have to talk to our people about going through the process of using the King Street dump moving forward, and see how that goes. Okay, Counselor Wollizer.
Your worship, can we have the motion as it stands read back before we vote?
Sure, City Clerk, would you mind?
Your worship, the motion is to discontinue the use of Seventh Street and make a motion to use King Street as the dump site.
Or, another suitable location. Like, I, my motion basically was meant so that it can be King Street, if that's the most economical, but if the city management would like to find another location, that's up to them, but I would just like to see it stopped on Seventh Street.
Okay.
Just to clarify, the garden that you mentioned is not actually on taxpayers, like, nobody's paying taxes on that land, I believe...
It's city-owned land.
Right, it's city-owned land, it's not a public garden, it's not where everybody goes and plants garden, I believe.
Well, it is, it is kind of a bit of a public garden, I don't know how many families use it, but it is on city, it's on city property, which again, shouldn't impact it in the dead of winter.
No, but it isn't something, like, we're not trying to drive through a garden that has been used like we have across the street on King Street. It's an actual public garden where people go and do their gardening. Is this just not somebody's private garden, or is it a bunch of people?
There's a few families that use it, I'm not sure how many.
Yeah, and so, I think that's another issue too, is that, you know, if, again, if we're allowing this kind of thing to happen on city property, we probably should have an agreement with these people, whoever it is, if there's two, three, four families using this area, we need to look into that, because it shouldn't infringe on the city doing the business of the day either.
Okay, so, what's your answer then, Counselor Vroba, when the people on King Street are upset? Do we then try to get another dump site, and then another dump site?
Then I say we use, then I say we use the other eight sites we've never had a complaint about. We have nine sites right now, and we have eight of them that have never had a concern. And so, again, with King Street, I'd be interested to find out why we stopped using it in 2006, 2007, I'm sure we can probably go back in the minutes and maybe find out, but if we have the close proximity to the houses also on King Street, which we have that apartment building right there, and then we have Chinook.
That's less than 100 feet from that fourplex, I'll tell you that.
Well, it's, if you, again, it's probably the same, it's probably 100 feet, so if we're going to have the same issue, then I think if we're right here now debating about King Street, then it should just really not be used on Seventh Street either, because if we're concerned about the people on King Street, which I say we are, then we should be concerned about the people on Seventh Street. And then, we need to look at the other dump sites that are not causing a problem we have never had a concern about.
Yeah, I would think that the dump sites that we're using now, we don't have the availability of any other sites except maybe King, and again, we'll have to have discussion with those people, but we have used that in the past, so we probably have the availability to potentially use that in the future, but other than that, I think Haley, I don't think we have any other sites, do we, within the city?
Your worship, no, not that I'm aware of, I would have to look into this.
Okay, Counselor Vroba.
I would just be curious, though, if we're going to pull the neighborhood and King Street, why we aren't pulling the neighborhood, or why we didn't pull the neighborhood in 2006, 2007 on Seventh Street. It just seems unfair that we go ahead and use a dump site where we have a concern, and a valid concern, but then we're fearful or not wanting to use a dump site on King Street where we used to use it all the time. And I bet you, if we look back, we probably had concerns from people on King Street, and that's why we stopped using it. And maybe the lesson here is, we need to look at how many feet from a home is suitable to have dump trucks coming and coming and coming, especially in a heavy snowfall year.
Okay. Any other questions or comments from members of council? Counselor Frank?
I guess, just one quick question to Counselor Vroba, so your motion, as it stands, before I vote for it, is to not use Seventh Street. Personally, like I said, I'm very open to trying some different things, and in hearing back on it, would you accept that if, in a timeframe, say a year, management comes back and says, no, this is just not, nothing else is working, we need to, that we can reevaluate at some point in time? Obviously, then, with some consideration of what this does look like, I just, I'm not going to say no to it forever and say, this is banned as a dump site, because I think that's not really fair to the business of the city, but I do want to try to accommodate and see if we can try something else, see what the results are, how much time extra is it really taking us, and how much is it really burdening us?
Oh, I agree, Counselor Frank, what I'm asking for today is for it to stop, and in the event that it's a huge burden on the city, then I think we have to definitely relook at that, but I also believe that we can look, we can figure out something else that is not going to cause it to be twice the amount of money or twice the amount of time, because of the fact that it's only for those types of areas, like we're not, we're doing Seventh, Eighth, Ninth, and then the three different parking lots listed, I think we can manage. I just think change is difficult, but this gentleman and his family, and the lady next door, he said it's having difficulty selling their home, it will help their quality of life.
Okay, any other questions or comments? Ready for the question? All in favor? Opposed? Okay. Okay, moving forward, we have, under executive reports, we have the Leisure Services Facilities Dodge Arena Report. Okay. So, this, what's that?
It's about the map, the pathway map.
The pathway map?
Yep.
Oh, I'm sorry. Under executive reports, thank you, City Clerk, we go to the Public Works Snow Removal Map for sidewalks. So, let's go over that one. Sorry, Erin, Haley? What's that? Okay, updated. Any questions or comments on that? This is the updated sidewalk pathways, snow removal map. Council's had the opportunity to peruse that. Did you have any questions or comments of Haley on that map, or are we all okay? Haley, did you have any extra comments you wanted to make, not this evening? Counselor Wollizer.
Thank you, your worship. When looking at this map, it does not include all of the new pathways. Is that because this is reflective of the priorities, and that the new pathways are done as time allows?
Your worship to Counselor Wollizer. I can't exactly speak on that, I had Shannon make this map. Those pathways would be hers to do, so...
Okay. Okay, not seeing any further questions or comments from members of council? Do we have a motion then to accept the map on the pathways as presented? Counselor Wollizer, thank you, Secretary, okay, Counselor Clark, ready for the question? All in favor? Carried, thank you. And next, we have, under executive reports, we have the Leisure Services Facilities Dodge Arena Report. So, in early January 24, council delayed the decision on the PDA boards to allow Leisure Services Management Team to research the best options for funding to be used. They met with EMHA, and the Estevan Skating Club, January 18, received positive insight on their use and future needs. The top, the four top priority items are as follows. The PDA ice surface is too small for some age groups, and boards do not meet their requirements. The ice surface is 80 feet by 185 feet, and for many age divisions, this size is suitable. As we move up in age divisions and body contact becomes part of the game, having flex in the boards becomes more important. Number two, players' boxes are small and need improvement. The size of the players' boxes are small for many teams, and the doors can stick. It's also challenging to have coaches have to walk on the ice in order to access the boxes. The volunteers in the penalty box are also required to walk on the ice. Number three, the viewing space is challenging. The east side of the arena is not accessible to the public, and much of the glass is boarded up. Additional items of concern, the access to the referee and players' dressing rooms caused concern for the well-being of players and referees alike, as they are required to walk through fans and parents. The viewing area is tight, and so, fans are often in close proximity to one another, and with emotions flaring up in games, this can add to the intensity level. Not enough dressing rooms with growing number of females on teams. We do have a room that we refer to as Dressing Room Five, but it does not have a washroom or shower. It's also a space that opposing team players should not have to share, but our space is limited. As ice is being split into multiple surfaces for younger age groups, we find the dressing rooms are small, as often more than one team needs to share a dressing room. When talking to user groups, it was clear that addressing the boards in PDA was of high importance, as it would assist in the success of their programming. However, it will not solve all the additional challenges listed above. From the user group perspective, the only way to address all the concerns and provide a better facility for all ages to use for gameplay would be to start fresh. EMHA voiced concerns that Beam Fate Arena is currently being used as the third ice surface. If that arena were to fail, it would cause added stress on Estevan's two surfaces. This would impact league games and tournaments, hosting capabilities, as many games are played using that arena. Excuse me, options and solutions. Complete the PDA boards with the budget allotted for the capital project amount, which will improve the safety of players in all divisions. This board package also includes the players' boxes, so those concerns will be addressed as well. They will have side access doors, eliminating the need for coaches and volunteers to walk on the ice surface. Number two, opening the southeast corner for fan viewing. This will include the glass being installed and bleacher made available for approximately 30 people. The door will be upgraded to allow access for fans interested in viewing from that location. Fans will need to walk outside the building to access that southeast corner. Global Sport informed me that they would be able to do the boards in Power Dodge Arena in late June or early July. It would take them approximately 10 to 14 days to complete. Recommendations, use of budgeted funds to improve the PDA boards and spectator viewing areas in the 24 season. Okay, first of all, Erin, did you have anything else to add? Did I miss anything?
Yeah.
Okay, we'll open the floor, Counselor Frank.
Thanks, your worship, and thanks to Erin and City Manager, and I believe Counselor Wollizer, and maybe Counselor Sernik, no, okay, for going to that meeting and starting some good dialogue with our, with our minor hockey teams. It's always great to have good, healthy conversations with everybody. I know there's a lot of hope and desire for a new rink, which has been for a number of years, and I totally understand that, and of course, that requires a lot of community input and fundraising and things like that, so we're, we're not at that stage, but I'm glad that we were able to kind of appease them and find some ways to make this rink that we have, make what we have work as best as we can within our budget, so that's great. So, yeah, I'm happy with that, and I would support, I'd make the motion to go ahead with, with what we need to do, especially if we can get more seating in that far back side, even though they have to go out and around, it's not ideal, but it's what we have, and we can do it for, for very little money, so I think that is a great solution to, is to get as much seating and make things as good as we can, and then plan for the future is, is the next step from there, so...
Okay, thank you, Counselor Frank. Any other questions, comments, Counselor Sernik?
Thank you, worship. I know I provided a little bit of resistance to this back in January, but since then, there's been meetings, a clear plan moving forward, and personally, I'm a little on the edge still, but stakeholders and people I represent have asked me to support it, so I will second the motion.
Okay, thank you for that. Counselor Clark?
Thanks, your worship. I just, I'm not sure, do we have a clear fundraising plan? Like, I know when we have the pickleball, we say, well, you should contribute, or the curling rink, you should contribute to any improvements. Is that, any of that contribution set up through minor hockey, and that, that they pay for any of this? I know minor ball comes, and they say, well, we'll pay a third, and stuff like that. Do we have any set plan for people, or do they, like, as a fundraising for a new rink, are they the lead for that, or is it sort of up to the community? I guess I just wonder if we have anything, anybody has any comment on that?
That, that's a fair comment. Right now, we don't have anything. Usually, the way it should work, the user groups would come to open council, say, we need a new skating rink, we need a new field... rink, we need a new fieldhouse. And then they would be involved along with members of council. For example, I was the chairman on Affinity Place. That was a six-year project. And that was building it. Before that, probably two, three years. So, yeah, you get the community involvement. Then, to showcase what you want to do, you have to have a plan. You have to have a picture. You have to have an architect rendering of what that looks like. You have to look at the costs, knowing that that'll probably escalate over time. I know with Affinity, we started out, now that was close to 10 years before it was built, at 8 million. It ended up being 26 million. So you have to keep that in mind. But you're right, you have to walk before you can run. So initially, what we need are user groups, user groups to come forward to get the, get things kicked off, and then get members of council involved, which I'm suggesting probably would involve the new council, and then start down that pathway of whatever the majority, as the new council would think, the majority of our citizens of this community want. Is it fieldhouse? I don't know. We're looking at, probably if we did that, and this is early days, but probably covering the racetrack at the cop that would cost, and then you'd have extra room in there for soccer, for football, practice, whatever. You're probably looking at an initial price of 12 to 15 million. And if you look at rink in the box, which you could get out of the U.S. with the exchange, you're probably looking at around 10 to 15. So these are broad parameters. But for either facility, you're looking at at least $15 million, and you'll need the community's support, you'll need the community's backing, and you'll have to have what this facility looks like before long, as you get into the fundraising. Any other comments?
I was just thinking, wondering if they had any money for the boards, not to?
Oh, okay. That, I don't know. Erin, have we had them come forward? Counselor Roba?
I used to be on the minor hockey board.
Are you bringing money forward?
Well, I used to be on the minor hockey board, and actually, minor hockey has brought a lot of money forward, I believe, in the past. They replaced all of the lights in the Power Dodge Ice Center back when I was, right, am I correct on that, Erin? The lights were replaced by minor hockey. And so they do have part of their money that they, minor hockey collects the fees, and then they do have an account, and then they can pick a project, and they usually do help us within our facilities. And so I don't know if the boards were ever on their radar, but truthfully, part of your spiel that we just listened to about the new rink possibility down the road, I would say is where they're probably one day hoping. But I, again, that would be a conversation Erin could probably have with minor hockey or Counselor Sernick, as our rep on there, that he could also bring up. That there are small projects, and I think, just as Counselor Clerk alluded to, other user groups do help, and minor hockey should be acknowledged for the help that they have done in the past. So they have definitely helped us in the past, and I will support this motion as well, though.
Okay, so are they coming forward? Do we know Counselor Sernick to help out with the boards?
Yeah, thank you, Worship. There's real, no talk of the boards, but that's obviously sprung the talk of the rinks. And I know I represent both minor hockey and the Bruins, and there's already talks of supporting the new arena, fundraising for the new arena. And there's projects, small projects being talked about, and there's also large projects being talked about as well, that would all directly go to funding the new arena. So, again, early days, as you said, there's lots to do, but the best, the best is the winds of change have started, and talks have started, and away we go.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions, comments, observations, seeing none? All in favor? Carrie, thank you. Thank you, Erin. Okay, next, under executive reports, we have the Fire Chief Monthly Report for December. Could we have a motion to accept that, please? Thank you, Counselor Wallyser. Seconded by, Counselor Sernick. Ready for the question? All in favor? Carrie. Next, we have, from the Fire Chief, the annual totals for '23. Could we have a motion, please, to accept that report? Okay, thank you, Counselor Clerk. Seconded by, Counselor Sernick. Questions or comments? Seeing none? Ready for the question? All in favor? Carrie. Under introduction of bylaws this evening, we have none. Public hearings and reports, we have none. Giving notice, we have from Counselor Sernick a request for affinity fire inspection deficiency report. So you have that. Council has that before them. Counselor Sernick, did you want to speak to that?
Yeah, no, thanks for the report. I do have questions. I don't really want to ask them tonight, but I do request that myself, City Manager, and the fire inspector just review this to also review my inquiry, and then we'll take it from there.
Okay. So any other questions or comments? Counselor Frank?
Thanks, Your Worship. Yeah, this is, this is good information, and there's one deficiency, a couple deficiencies. Just want to make sure that we obviously are going to correct that or have corrected that since this has come out. So obviously, we're supposed to be held to the same standard as any other business, so make sure that we are, but.
Yeah, it's my understanding that this has been brought to the attention, so I think it's, if it's not already done, it'll be in progress.
Perfect, thank you.
Okay, any other questions or comments? Seeing none? Yeah, okay. City Clerk has suggested we have a motion to accept that, so Counselor Sernick, seconded by, Counselor Frank, ready for the question? All in favor? Carrie. Thank you. Next, motions from committee, we have none this evening. Consideration of bylaws, we have none. Inquiries, Counselor Roba?
Thank you, Worship. A lot of my time was spent with Seventh Street the last couple of weeks, but also, I had a call regarding the 120 Service Road, basically the service road that goes just past the Floor Store, Energy Electric, and onto the Trailer Park. And so what the first request on that road is to name that road. And the problem is, it's, 120 Service Road is his address, but then it's also off of the highway, so then he's basically Highway 47 South. And so what they're, what he's asking is for we have an actual name. He said, you guys name this, we name the city named, the Brown Service Road, like the service road going by this, through the city yard, and that's now called Brown Road. And he said it makes for hard for package deliveries. He often will not get deliveries, and his stuff will get sent back because they can't find his business. He, he just asked that we look into that, so I did send that concern over to Richard Newfield.
Richard is looking.
Hoping that, yes, thank you. And then also, his other concern came up last year with the drainage on that road. We're constantly grading that road, which is another thing that we do on Devonian West, and, or Devonian East, sorry. And so I explained that to him, but he said, there's so much water that comes down there. We all also talked about the fact about the snow hills, that we were not going to try and pile them up there so that wouldn't create the extra moisture. But he said it's coming off the back and also from the hill over top of McDonald's Road. And so I contacted Jeff and Haley, and basically, they are looking into it. They have been working with Keflum, and they're trying to put something together with possibly a drainage swale. So I think he was satisfied, knowing that the city has been actively looking at it. But, yeah, because we hadn't gotten back to him last year, he thought maybe we had forgotten about him. But haven't forgotten, it's just a slow process, so.
Well, we talked about that years ago, but I thought.
That was last year, last year that we brought it to council for it, for this.
I thought that was already done.
Yeah, no, they've still been trying to figure it out because it is an issue down there. And right now, they are doing a good job of getting down there, grading the road, but it just doesn't fix the drainage. So thank you to management for continuing to look into those two problems for him.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Clerk?
Thanks, Your Worship. I just want to acknowledge the great work Kinsman Tele Miracle did, and the Canets from Estevan who were very involved in that. I don't want to single out people, but I saw them, some Estevan people that were up there working on it, and the success they had raising money within the community and with a great provincial project that is and their support for it. And I just want to give them a big thank you for what they've done.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you for that. And they're a big part of the, of the telethon. A lot of them work all year on that, raising money. So we thank them very much. It's great to have the volunteer base that we have in our community. We can't say enough about it. Counselor Wallyser?
Thank you, Your Worship. Wanting to draw attention to Wednesday, February 28th, is Pink Shirt Day nationwide. Their mission is to create a kind, inclusive world by raising awareness for anti-bullying initiatives. So council is wearing pink tonight, but also a conversation to have as the broader community, especially with kids as they tackle these topics on Wednesday.
Absolutely. Thank you for that, Counselor Wallyser. And we used to do a walk. I don't know what happened. We'd walk around downtown with pink shirts. What happened to that?
Before my time, Your Worship.
Oh, well, yeah, I had a vehicle back then, so it's not too long ago. But anyway. Counselor Sernick?
Nothing tonight, Your Worship.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Frank?
Thanks, Your Worship. Just to, I just want to acknowledge, we have tickets on sale for the Creighton Lodge fundraiser. We have comedians coming on April 20th, so if you'd like to, contact Creighton Lodge and get your tickets for that. And just a huge thanks to those who supported the Source Valley Theater Valentine's Dinner fundraiser, which sold out in like, less than five hours. So if you didn't get to support it but wish you could have, I apologize. Next year, I think we're trying to figure out how we have Valentine's Day across multiple days because it's such a popular event. So we're going to figure some stuff out. But it was a fantastic event and raised money for the theater to keep that alive, so that was great.
Yeah, thank you. I was able to attend. It was a great event. Well done. City Manager, anything you'd like to say? City Treasurer, anything you, nothing this evening? City Clerk, anything you'd like to say this evening?
Nothing, Your Worship.
Okay, thank you. Do we have a motion to move into? Closed. Thank you. Counselor Wallyser, seconded by, Counselor Sernick, ready for the question? All in favor? Carrie, thank you very much. We stand adjourned. Good night.